Order. Secretary to note members present.
Um, all present except for Chris Schley.
Administration reports.
All right.
So we have our special board meeting tonight. Uh, I want to thank you all for coming out. We have two presentations that will be listening to. One was going to be from Bear. Uh, Kevin Mullin is here. He is a Baird banker. And so he's going to be going over one-on-one referendum work with us. We have copies in front of you of the presentation as well. Uh, our second presentation will be by Eric, who we met at our last meeting. And he'll be going over some facility study, change of order presentations for McKinney Street. And then I'll follow up after them with our sheriff's school liaison officer agreement as well. So I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Great, um, thanks, Jesse. And uh, thanks for allowing me to be here this evening. I really appreciate it. Um, as Jesse said, I'm Kevin Mullin and I was here and talked with you guys this spring regarding the defeasance. And this is kind of a continuation of that conversation, kind of one of the building blocks as we move forward. And so, um, what I'd like to do tonight is just talk about, um, the steps in the referendum process and put, um, your referendum thoughts in the context of what's happening in the state. Um, and talk a little bit about why, um, you know, school districts throughout the state are considering referendum. And then talk about some of the assumptions we've made that have given some color and context to the conversations you might have had around projects and what impacts might be. Because, you know, those are the things that, um, you'll constantly be coming back to, but they're pretty fluid. Um, and like where we're at right now, um, given the state biennial budget is a good example of, you know, what we mean by fluid. You know, the, the rules change a little bit as we move forward and things update during the process. So I think it's really important to talk about the assumptions that go into those building blocks. So as they change, you don't get angry with me. But more importantly, you have a real understanding as to how that was constructed and why that happens. So, um, thanks for your patience.
On buttons on the side.
Yeah, I think I've got it on.
Jesse?
Jesse? Oh, there we go. If that works for you, I can just. Well, so, uh, here is our version of the food pyramid. This is, uh, really just an example of the different types and scope of projects that a school district might be considering. And up at the top are the smaller capital projects that, uh, could potentially come before the school board. Things like boiler, a new roof, things that are more ongoing maintenance type things. Um, heating, ventilation and air conditioning. And you can see as those projects get larger, uh, we start to move down that pyramid. And, um, you start to consider some major renovation and remodeling work like, uh, you know, new building wings or new educational formats or a full, uh, new elementary school. And the reason that we show this is, you know, at the top end of this pyramid are things that you could, uh, address maybe through your budget or with cash on hand. But as those, uh, needs start to grow, your vision and your thought in terms of how to, um, finance those change. Because, uh, things, small things like windows, boilers, uh, ongoing maintenance things, they're probably programmed or if you're lucky, you may have a way to program them into your budget and you pay for them, you know, like you would a home expense out of your current budget. But those larger things, uh, they're, uh, unreasonable to consider funding in one budget. And from an equity standpoint, it's not fair to put all that burden on one set of taxpayers in one year to cover a cost for something that is going to accrue a benefit over a long period of time. So as you move down that pyramid, you know, there's a reason you may consider funding that in a different way. So when we were talking about the things that are on the top half of a, um, pyramid, there are tools that you have as a school board to consider for funding those projects. And they're out of, potentially out of your operational funds. Um, so you could consider, if you're lucky, having, uh, some of those things built into your annual budget. But most school districts, that's not really a reality because we've been living under revenue limits. And as inflation has occurred and revenue limits haven't moved up, you've had to use a lot of the resources that maybe historically have been set aside for capital projects for other operating needs. Um, so for most school districts, that has been squeezed out of their budget. Some school districts have a Fund 41 or a Fund 46 set aside. Um, so they may be able to periodically, uh, either at the beginning or the end of the year, set aside money in a special trust that builds up over time. And as that money builds up, you may be able to address some of those things in maybe the top third of the pyramid using some of those savings accounts or capital project accounts that are, uh, uh, set aside. You also have a general fund balance that grows, um, or shrinks depending on how the year ends each year. You, you create a budget, uh, for the school district with estimated revenues and estimated expenditures. And then at the end of the year, um, if you're lucky, your revenues are slightly better than your expenditures. And, you know, that difference gets added to fund balance, uh, or vice versa. Uh, most school districts, uh, have a fund balance somewhere between 12 and, you know, 30% of their expenditures, annual expenditures. And yours, I believe, is in the roughly 12. 40% range. So, um, that is a place where you can look for, um, some of those needs. However, when you start to look at larger projects, um, you probably want to spread that cost over a longer period of time, like a home mortgage, you know, or a home equity loan for a large addition on your house. It's just more equitable and, uh, financially feasible to spread that expense over a number of budgets. And so borrowed money is how you can do that. School districts basically have two ways to do that. One is using Fund 38 where those payments on the bar, uh, on that borrowing are included in your revenue limit. Or using Fund 39 where you go and ask for voter approved, um, budget amendment or, uh, um, exceptions, um, to add to your budget for that payment. So with Fund 38, most school districts use those for very small type projects. Because again, that payment, even though it doesn't come, uh, the whole payment doesn't come out of your, uh, budget in one fell swoop, you're not paying for the project in one period. You may be spreading it out over 10 years. Those 10-year annual payments come out of your, uh, revenue limit. And so it still constricts your operational budget. So it's reasonable to use that for certain projects. But usually when you get into a modest sized project or a large project, you're going to be talking about a referendum, uh, process where you would go and ask voters to consider giving you additional resources to make those debt service payments to fund the cost of that larger project. And so in all likelihood, for some of the projects that we'll be talking about this evening, uh, borrowed money using a referendum ask is probably the direction that you would be going. So in Wisconsin, there are three types of referendums, uh, to ask for revenue limit exemptions or exceptions to add to your revenue limit. As we discussed, one of them is debt. So in Wisconsin, if you want to borrow, uh, and exceed your revenue limit for those borrowed payments, um, you can do that. The state limits you to a 20-year term for that borrowing. In Wisconsin, over the last 10 years, there are, you know, probably roughly 500 school districts that have asked that, uh, question. 72% of those questions have passed and 28% have failed. You're limited by the amount of value that you have in your community. 10% of your value is what you can borrow. You're, you know, uh, very, we'll talk about that later. You've got lots of debt capacity in that regard. But when you ask that question, you're going to, um, ask for a dollar specific amount. So you want to make sure that the budget is pretty dialed in when you ask that question. And you're going to want to be very specific about what that borrowed money is for. So the question will state those two things. So that's the debt referendum. You can also go to voters and ask for additional resources for your operational or revenue limit. So to exceed your revenue limit, you would need to ask, uh, voters for that approval. And you can do that in two ways. One is on a non-recurring basis where you would go to the voters and ask them for an amount to exceed for a period of time. So a certain dollar amount for a certain period of time. And at the end of that period of time, it sunsets. Um, and you'd have to go back and ask voters again for, uh, additional approval. Over the last 10 years, those, uh, non-recurring questions have had a 78% pass rate, uh, throughout the state with 22% failing. Um, there's also a recurring, uh, question that's slightly different than a non-recurring question. The way that it's different is that it doesn't sunset. So you ask for a dollar amount to be added to your revenue limit and then it gets added to your revenue limit base forever. Those are slightly less popular. There's a 74% pass rate with those. And I will say that, you know, one thing that's worth noting about that question, it gets added to your revenue limit in the year that it's passed. But then it drifts with your revenue limit. So as your revenue limit grows or shrinks based on what your enrollment is doing, the efficacy of that question goes with it. So, you know, if you start to lose, uh, enrollment, it starts to decline slightly. So the other thing I will say about a recurring referendum, it's helpful because it gets you off the cycle of a constant ask in that operational cycle. But it's a lot like LASIK surgery. It feels really good the first year you have it and then it starts to diminish over time. And so usually you go back and have it touched up at a certain point in time. So oftentimes as a board and as an administrative team, you're out there selling it as a forever solution that really is a forever for six years and needs a touch up after seven kind of thing. So it's all about, you know, making sure you're transparent about how it's being added to your revenue base and how it's likely going to age. So looking throughout the state over that 10-year period of time, um, this is the recurring referendum. The number of, uh, districts that have asked for a recurring referendum is, you know, roughly 150 districts throughout the state. And as I mentioned, 74% of those have been successful. And roughly 26% of them have failed. You can see where they've been throughout the state, kind of scattered throughout. Uh, similarly, that non-recurring referendum, much more popular. So that's, you know, oh, close to, you know, 450, uh, districts throughout the state. Or 450 of those questions have been asked, I guess, is a more appropriate way, um, to describe that. Again, uh, close to a 78% pass rate over the last 10 years. And again, you can see where those questions have been asked, both passed and failed throughout the state. And then probably the, the most, uh, popular in terms of number of, uh, questions asked, over, uh, 400, uh, questions asked for debt referendum throughout the state. And again, I think what's interesting here is that, you know, everything below, you know, kind of roughly Highway 2, um, in the northern part of the state, um, that's where most of those questions have been asked. Um, and most school districts throughout the state have had to consider that, um, over the last 10 years. Any questions with regard to that? So when we talk about, uh, debt levy, um, debt levy is one component of your revenue mix. And so this is maybe a little bit of budget 101 as you head into October. Um, I really like this stuff. I fully understand that it's not everyone's cup of tea, so please bear with me. Um, the, uh, pink side, on the left-hand side, um, the state gives you, um, a revenue limit. And it's based on the number of students and a minimum, or the dollar amount per student behind each, uh, of those, uh, kids in your class. Um, that's just a multiplication number of kids, the average over the last three years, times your revenue limit. And this year, um, the state, uh, in the biennial budget has given two pieces of relief, um, to school districts. If you were spending below 11,000, you can increase 11,000 per student. You can increase your spending up to 11,000. Or add $325 per student to what was your base revenue limit last year. As long as it, it brings you above 11,000, you do, you know, one of the other. If you were already spending above 11,000, you could add the full 325. So based on last year, um, your revenue limit less what the state was, uh, adding, uh, to your budget for aid, local taxpayers paid $2.6 million of the local share of your operational cost. So 2.6 million is what, uh, was, uh, added to your budget last year for operations on taxpayers. That's what you'd ask taxpayers to approve. Additionally, your community service fund is a, a special exemption. Um, you're asking in last year's budget for roughly $200, uh, $200,000 for a budget, uh, from the tax levy. And then you had referendum approved debt, debt service payments in Fund 39. In your budget last year, you had scheduled $760,000. Um, that was roughly, um, $300,000 for what was scheduled to be paid. And then you defeased or prepaid roughly $400,000. Um, so that's what that 760, uh, added up to. So if you take those three components, those were the levy pieces of your, um, budget, add them together, $3.6 million is what you asked for from local taxpayers. So that $3.6 million gets spread across your tax base. So your tax base last year was just under 500 million. Um, all of the property owners, uh, that pay taxes and get valued in your school district, all of that added up to $491 million. So if you take the 3,600,000 that you asked taxpayers for and divide that by the tax base of 491, your mil rate was $7.40 per thousand. So on a $100,000 home, that taxpayer was asked to pay $740 a year for school purposes. A $200,000 home would, would be double than that. It would be roughly, you know, uh, $14,800. $1,480. So does all of that square with you?
I have a question for you.
Absolutely.
How do you give a simple answer to someone? I mean, mill rates are terribly misunderstood.
Absolutely.
And it's hard to get your head around in terms of how it really bottom line. I mean, because we can look at this.
Yep.
But a lot of let's, I mean, locally.
Sure.
Algoa, a lot of it was reassessed last year.
Yep, yep.
And, um, uh, and our assessment went up quite a bit.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we as a school district said, we, you know, we have not increased.
Your tax rate.
Your tax rate.
Yep.
Yet. On their bill, they saw a huge.
Dollar increase.
Increase in dollar amount that went to the school.
Yeah.
So how do you explain that?
Sure. Um, and it's, it is, it's really challenging. So, um, I'll try to do it simply and I know I'll get pulled into a quagmire and, you know, like have like a whole bunch of other pieces to it.
But maybe, maybe it'll.
So I went back to the school levy piece. So this is the dollar amount that you've asked for, right? So there, you, you, you can look at the dollar amount of the levy and track that. So, you know, that dollar amount that you ask for, that's, it is what it is. And it gets spread across all of the taxing jurisdictions. So let's just say it's a village of Algoa and a town in, uh, is Alaska in the school district?
Oh, Casco.
Okay, Casco. Yeah. So the assessors in both of those places, you know, they have a job. The job of the assessor is to periodically go out and put a value on every property in the community. But they probably do that once every five years. But the home market is just constantly changing. And here in Algoa, like it is throughout the state, but probably even a little bit more than the rest of the state because of blue water out there, um, home values have increased, you know, year over year. People want to live here and they're willing to pay to live here. And so the value of property is going up. The assessor doesn't go out and revalue every house every year for every tax cycle. They do it, you know, periodically. So home values here have drifted way above what they are in assessments. And so when an assessor goes out and finally does that assessment process, they equalize the value in Algoa, let's just say. You know, Algoa, your home was assessed at $300,000, you know, four years ago. And that's what reflected in the tax bill for the last three years. But you know you can sell it for more because your neighbors have been selling their homes for more. Eventually, the city of Algoa has to move your assessed value in line with what it's actually worth, the equalized value. School districts, every year, because you are in a bunch of different communities that have different assessors and different assessment cycles. If we didn't have an equalization process, the town of Casco might have the incentive to keep their assessments really low for a really long period of time so that they get less school taxes assessed to them. So every year, there's an equalization process that the state does that brings every individual community their assessment value. They make an estimate of what it is and equalize it and put it in an equalized value. So the equalized value that we have here, that 491, is the market value, the state's best estimate of what market value is for all of the individual communities in the school district at the end of the year. It's still an estimate, but it's better than what if you added up the assessed values. And the reason that they do that is because they wanted to break that $3.6 million of tax levy fairly between all of the towns and villages that have different assessment cycles. So that's the difference. Unfortunately, whatever, fortunately, unfortunately, Wisconsin's, the way we pay for schools and the way we pay for municipal services is based on property tax value. And yes, everyone's happy when their, that the values of their homes are going up. But if you're, the value of your home, because you have a, a lake home, goes up more quickly than the value of a commercial property in town, you're going to end up assuming a higher burden of all of those services because it's a property tax-based system. And as your property value increases more than the average, you're going to assume more of that burden. Similarly, is, you know, if you, if it's less, um, you, you'll assume less of the burden. So that's big picture. But I will say, you know, you probably, the people that are picking up the phone are the people that maybe, and I'm not picking out lake owners, but it's easy to do that. Probably people that have lake properties or, you know, something that's gone up more quickly and that, that's seen a more dramatic increase in value relative to the average. So now they're assuming a bigger burden of the cost. So, yeah, it's, it's a complicated answer. Um, it's a complicated process. And schools are like kind of caught in the crossfire because your tax bill is the biggest portion of the whole, or your tax piece is the biggest portion of the whole tax bill. So Jesse gets those phone calls. You guys probably do as well. But, you know, it also is reflective of all of the other pieces also, you know, sharing that burden and the benefit.
No, that was, I think that was very well put.
It's been a very popular question of the past year. So, and just kind of piggybacking off that, um, two things. One, last year, state average increase in, uh, equalized value, real values was 14% throughout the state. Of that, 2% roughly was, uh, economic growth or new stuff, new people, new stuff, like real new growth. 12% of it was inflation on average. So, you know, inflation is, you know, it, people don't notice. If you kept your, if, if all of it was inflationary growth and you said you dropped your tax rate, people would be paying basically the same dollars and there would be no solace in the fact that the tax rate went down. So that's one thing. Similarly, we've just seen municipal values, they're just starting to be released. They haven't gotten to schools yet. But very strong growth again this year, almost a similar dynamic. Lots of inflationary growth, modest real growth. So like 1% to 2% real growth, new stuff and like 13% inflationary growth. So it's early, but I, um, that's what we're expecting. Well, that's going to come up again here in a couple of minutes. So when you look at your historical mil rate, um, it reflects a couple of those things. So if you look back to 2018, your mil rate was $9.08. And it's drifted down each year. So that's happened for two reasons. One is because of revenue limits. You know, you've been constricted in terms of what you can raise for revenue. And it hasn't really, in my opinion, kept up with inflation. And so your levy has, you know, the dollars that you've been asking for had been relatively stable. But then especially last year, you had a lot of growth in value. And so the 867 down to 740, um, was a drop in mil rate mostly because of the change in equalized value. Jesse, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm pretty sure that, that roughly your tax levy year over year, 22 to 23, the dollars that you asked for were pretty level, right? But again, some, there were probably some people that ended up paying more than they did the year before as a percentage. And some people that paid less because the, the burden shifted because there were changes in terms of what homes were worth relative to other homes in your community, in, in the state. I think probably a better comparison or a, another good comparison would be just to look and see what your mil rate looks like relative to peers in your area. And so we picked your conference. And, you know, similar, uh, school districts throughout, throughout the state all kind of experienced that general sense of increase in value last year. So if you compare your tax rate to others around you, um, from last year, you can see, you compare favorably in that comparison as well. Gibraltar's, uh, kind of an outlier.
Yeah.
Because they've got a lot, a lot of value behind every student. Uh, and then, uh, I wanted to touch on your debt capacity. So I talked about how when you borrow money, school districts have a credit limit, so to speak. The state legislatively says that you can borrow up to 10% of your value. So your value, including TIF districts, you know, so I mentioned before it was 491, that doesn't include TIF districts and we won't get into that right now. But yeah, the TIF district value and that's, you know, roughly another $10 million. $50 million is what your, uh, five, I'm sorry, $502 million is what your total school district value is. You can borrow up to 10% of that based on last year's value. So your borrowing authority is roughly $50 million. You presently have about $1.1 million outstanding in existing loans. So you've got 97% of that available to you. Now, I'm not, you know, advocating for a $49 million referendum, but, you know, that's what you have available to you and it's likely to grow when values get released in October. So it just helps put it in context, in my opinion. So I'll stop there. Any questions with what I've talked about so far? Although the next part will get really wonky. I like it. Again, not everyone does, but, um, also it's probably, you know, starts to put some of the con, uh, numbers that Eric's going to talk about in context. So we did some initial projections on what, uh, different dollar impacts would be for different packets of projects based on what we saw as of your budget last year. So, uh, we made some assumptions. Uh, we assumed that the borrowing rate for a 20-year borrowing would be 5 and 1/4%, which is conservative in the current interest rate environment. And we assumed that these are really, you know, relatively large project amounts. And if you were to borrow this much, you would want to spread it out over the full 20-year period of borrowing. So that was the first assumption. You receive aid from the state in three different tiers based on spending. We're assuming that any dollar you spend on debt is the last in that tier of spending. So it's going to be aided at the lowest percentage because that's the most conservative assumption that we would have. Based on the July estimate, every dollar that you spend on debt service, you get 23 cents back on that dollar the following year based on. And then it's pretty close to where you were last year in the third tier. So each additional dollar you spend for debt service, if you spend a dollar this year, next year, you're going to get 23 cents back from the state in the form of aid. And then we assume that your value would grow at roughly 2% this year and then 1% moving forward. Now, I just mentioned that, you know, we're expecting values to increase much more than that. Why are we being so conservative here? So 2% and 1% thereafter is a more close proximity to what new growth has been. New stuff, new people, other people's money, um, over time. And so we feel like that's a better reflection than saying, oh, we're going to grow at 14 and 15% for the next two years and then, you know, 5% thereafter. Because a lot of that would be inflationary growth and it's just, you know, a redistribution of money. And it's kind of, you know, I think this is a better reflection of that. So, um, with that, uh, based on last year's budget, and I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail, looking at what you borrowed and what you did for defeasance and how your debt service is being repaid, we assumed that all those things, you know, remain constant, that you could borrow just over $10 million without increasing your levy for debt service. If you increase that amount to 14 million, it would go up to roughly 61 cents. And then at 17.1 million, it would roughly go up to a dollar eight. And the reason that we have these three amounts here is because they're rough. And I don't need to jump in front of your presentation. And I don't need to jump in front of your presentation, but it's a rough approximation of where the facility study amounts, you know, kind of. Gapped out at. So assuming, you know, no impact, you know, obviously, you know, we're saying that, you know, there would be. No change in your tax bill year over year for debt service at 10 million, 50,000. At 14 million, that would be an increase on a $100,000 home of $61 a year. On a $300,000 home, that's an increase of, you know, $183 a year. And at 17 million, that increase, that impact is a dollar eight or 108 dollars per year on a $100,000 home. And 324 dollars a year on a $300,000 home. So really geeky, but I do think it's worth talking about it. So this schedule is what that plan of finance looks like. When you layer it in around your existing debt service payments and I just wanted to show this to you because I think it's important. That you understand and I won't go through it, well, this I actually won't go through in kind of detail. But I won't go through the next one in a ton of detail. So your levy year on the left hand side, that's the year in which you're building your levy or the first year's case. Last year, you built your levy in 2022 for 23 payments. So the levy that you passed is making payments in the current year. Last year, your scheduled debt service payment for your existing bonds was $310,000. And you levied an additional $450,000 to prepay debt. So the combination of that, your debt service levy was $760,500. So that was the far right hand bubble in that levy chart that I showed was 76500. So that's the amount that you have in your budget right now for debt service for referendum debt. On a mill rate basis. That. Equates to a dollar 55, so of the 740 that you asked taxpayers for last year. A dollar 55 of it was for debt service payments. Moving forward, you've got on your existing debt, four more payments left on that borrowing through 2027. And you also have some additional funds available. We assume that you in the current budget that you're building, that you would have. An over levy or a defeesence levy of 525. To keep your mill rate for debt service relatively constant in the budget. And that, moving forward, was the target that we were using for that $10 million, $50,000. So you'll notice that the state aid column is zero. Because it's not more or less than what you were spending before. So the impact to aid is neutral, it doesn't generate more or less aid based on that schedule. So your existing payments are on the left, the new borrowing for 10 million five is in the middle. With those assumptions and we assume that you'd borrow that in July of 2024. And the first payment would be in your 24. But budget you create in 2024 for 2025's payment. So it'd be the budget that you create in October of 2024, a year from now. And you know, that that would remain constant through that period of time. Does that make sense? So this is a little more interesting. When you add it to your. Operational levy, so there's a dashed line in the middle in red. To the left is what your actual mill rate was historically and how it broke out. So in the black column is your operating levy. That's, you know, the the fun 10 levy net of the aid. That you asked for for running the school. That's the the revenue limit constrained part of your budget, that's the black part. In blue is your scheduled debt service payments on referendum debt. And in yellow is the amount that you've been levying to prepay debt service. And so you can see that that yellow has allowed you to kind of maintain some. Continuity in your levy. Moving forward in 2023, 24, so the first column to the right of that dotted line. We've estimated what, based on what little we know of the budget right now. Where we think that tax rate would be for the 2023, 24 budget. It includes referendum debt that you've already got for payments in blue. And then yellow, that 525, which is what we assumed would be your over levy for debt service in the current budget. Or you have defeesence in the current budget. So moving forward, if you were then to, you know, schedule a new borrowing. In the green, that's where that new borrowing goes. Well, what I do want to point out is that black line, your operational levy. We have very little control over what that does because it's, you know, dictated by the biennial budget. This year, we know that you can add some money to your operating budget because the state's giving you that authority. As well as next year. We're going to obviously be continuing to monitor that and talk with you about that as you build your budget. But when we talk about no impact, we're comparing just the debt service piece. So the 17.1 million dollars, this is the example of that. I'm not going to go into the detail of it again. Because I know that you've got limited tolerance for that kind of stuff and thank goodness you do. But similarly, here's a chart for that and that's where we talk about the dollar nine increase again. It's the difference between what your debt service levy was, the blue and the gold compared to where it's going. Moving forward. So we thought it would be helpful to give you some just really broad stroke. Milestones on what the referendum timeline would look like. Assuming you were considering an April, well, actually, this is neutron what you're considering for a date. So start by saying in even numbered years, you have two opportunities to go to voters and ask for referendum approval. One in the spring, typically that's April and one in the fall, typically that's November. So that's when those the generals are held in even number years. In odd number of years, you actually only have one opportunity to go forward. So we only had in this calendar year, just a fall election to ask. So that's the vote date. Moving backwards, if you were considering a referendum. You'd want to start your pre-planning for referendum one to three years out and you know, you're certainly within that window. You've been talking broadly about what your facilities needs are and trying to quantify those. As you're doing that, as you start to kind of, you know, involve that process, you want to start to bring. Not only board input into that conversation. But you want to start to bring community input into that conversation so that, you know, you can get a better sense. Of what the community more broadly is thinking and how your vision of the needs of the district fit with what. The community's vision of the needs are, just because there are only so many people you can talk to and it's just helpful. So that's 12 to 18 months out from that date generally when that process begins. I think it's also important when you're considering a very large project that has, you know. Implications on the broad community and educational programming and or, you know, may have other components. Involved in it like athletics or auditoriums. To talk to the public about their opinions and survey the public. Not only specifically about those questions and those needs, but other things that are happening in the district. It's just a really good opportunity to get that input. Because you as a board and as a community will be investing a lot of time and effort into that referendum process. Really helpful to get some initial feedback from the community in terms of what their tax tolerances are, what their. Overall thoughts are for that. So we usually say that's it's good to do that a season before, one to two seasons before the referendum. So for a spring referendum, you'd want to be doing it in the fall. For a fall referendum, obviously, in the spring. You have to pass the resolution approving your referendum 70 days prior to the resolution day or to the referendum date, the vote date. So for an April referendum, that question would have to be approved by the board in detail at the end of January. So you you'd want to have all of those surveys, all those pieces coalesce. And an opportunity for the board to really dig into the, you know, all of that information. Ahead of your last meeting in January. And then word of caution, you know, there are two big holidays in between there, no, you know, Thanksgiving and Christmas. That generally all of a sudden surprise people and constrict those dates, so that's something to consider. But it's not a bad time to to move forward. Once that resolution is passed and the information's in the public. You really want to get your informational campaign going and engaged at that point in time. So between, you know, that resolution passage date and the vote date, that's really when the informational campaign. Hits the ground running. I say informational campaign, obviously, as a board in a district, your role certainly not to advocate. For a vote yes, but you obviously have an obligation to make sure that the public understands why you think that this is the right vision for the district. And why you feel good about any solution as a solid step forward. You know, there's a difference between saying this is what we think is right and you should like this because we think it's right. So you know, that informational campaign begins at that time and then the vote date, obviously. Briefly, interest rates, I know there's probably an awful lot of conversation about where we are in the interest rate cycle. So this chart shows interest rates back to 2014. We're obviously coming off of a very low level of interest rates in 2022, historical lows. At the end of 2020, beginning of 22. But we're moving, if you were to actually look back 30 years, we're in a very average interest rate environment right now for a 20 year borrowing. And so, you know, I just wanted to make sure that that was something that was understood, that we're not like. At absolute highs, even though we feel like we've moved quickly off of interest rates that were low. We have moved very quickly, but we're still in a very average interest rate environment when you consider the last 30 years. And then your recent referendum history, you've had three referendums that have passed. Two for issuing debt and one for a non-recurring referendum. And then just a list of some of the recent school referendums in your area on that list of comparables.
Question. So when we approve it and we form the question and we start the informational campaign. There's a dollar amount that we are basing on a certain interest rate.
So great, really good question or good observation. So the dollar amount is what you approve, so the the principal amount, the construction cost is what you approve. So let's just say it's $17 million for, you know, academic needs and, you know. Whatever else 17 million dollars buys. You can't borrow more than 17 million. The interest rate is what the interest rate is when the bonds are issued. So you don't know until the bonds are actually sold and interest rates are fixed. So the good news is that when you sell the bonds, they're fixed for that 20 year period of time and, you know. Your interest rate stays. Right, but we don't know until after the referendum what that interest rate is. So like going back nine slides, that assumption of 5 and 1/4% is. Roughly 100 basis points or a full percent above what the current market is right now for bonds. But that's intentional because we want to leave some room and we want to be conservative. So, yeah, great observation, thank you. I'm not going to talk about this schedule in detail, other than this breaks down different referendum dates available to the district. And their past fail rates. My suggestion is go when you feel like you're ready. Because I don't think that there's a dramatic difference between, you know, April and November. I think it's really more important if you feel like there is a really strong need and obviously you do. If you're able to go in April. That's helpful. Because if it's not successful, you have the ability to retool that and ask again in November. You are limited to two questions, two asks in a calendar year. So, you know, especially on an operational question, that's something to be super aware of. Because, you know, if if that operational question is critical and most times it is. To the, you know, health of the district moving forward. You want to make sure that you're you're giving yourself the ability to ask. To address it appropriately, so. You can look at those as you see fit, but I think, you know. Both dates have been tremendously successful recently. And then additional thoughts, you know, just some visioning that, you know, based on our. Engagement with school districts around referendum. Involve your community early and it starts with your facility study, you guys are, you're doing that. Make sure your board is on board, you know, to the extent that you can have a collaborative vision. That really sends a strong message to the community. Communication is obviously key. But we talk about addressing the elephant in the room, every school district has their own kind of complexion and nuance. Everyone's got the crazy uncle that, you know, you're never want at the dinner table at Christmas, but always there. Recognize, you know, like the thing that you think people are going to, that that's going to rile people up in the community, that's going to be their rub. And don't be afraid to address it because it will come up. And, you know, it's something, whatever it is, you've thought about it, you've discussed it, you recognize it and you've managed it. Don't be afraid to talk about the things that you're uncomfortable talking about because they will come up. So thanks for your attention, that's a lot of information, I appreciate it, it's summer especially.
Thank you.
Okay, so to kind of piggyback off of that temperature, actually, that last slide really does speak to. What we're proposing to the district of Al, school district of Algoa. Again, Eric Renes with McKinstry. Prior to joining McKinstry, I was a superintendent for 11 years in DeForest and Whitewater. 26 years in public education. My role is to support school districts through whatever projects they may have. If a district decides that they're going to pursue a potential referendum. And I would be a support and bringing resources to the board, the administration in community engagement. Kind of the pre-referendum informational campaign, supporting those as well. So what I'm sharing and I shared the same information the last time we were here when we actually presented the facility study report. That kind of those final few slides were the next steps, recommended next steps. About how to further engage your community and get their input. What we're proposing is how you might want to do that. So in looking at it, and I've already had conversations with Jesse regarding timeline and scope of what we would offer. In addition to myself, there'd be a communication specialist. Our marketing department within McKinstry to help support, create collateral materials. But we would begin with a kickoff meeting. And if you're considering a potential April referendum and you want to kind of position the board to be able to consider that by January. And that would be starting pretty soon. Coming back to the board to decide, you know, are there certain parameters you want to engage the community? It has been my experience that almost bringing together a focus group and. The communication consultant that I've been talking to and have worked with for many years. We really think it would be in the interest of the district to not be limited in the size of that committee. There's lots of different ways to approach this, you can do informational, just start informational campaigns as early as now. Or bring in a committee that you that the board sets a charge to to say. We want you to review the facility study, provide your input. Make a recommendation to the school board based off of that facility study, how to move forward. And then the board considers that purely on their their recommendation is purely advisory. So we'd recommend that, you know, you you form that group, you don't limit the number that you have, you. Put an all call invite to your community. What we would be doing is supporting Jesse and his team to help facilitate that, create a process that allows everyone. a process that allows everyone who does attend to be able to participate equally. Because, you know, oftentimes, and I'm making kind of a general broad assumption here, a lot of times these can be very emotional heated, because everybody has their particular things that they're passionate about. And so it's always important to allow everyone to have an opportunity to be an equal participant. So that's what we would be doing to help Jesse and his team to not only create a process and help facilitate that process, but create an agenda that helps inform those participants, those community members, and set some parameters to how they provide that feedback. I know that Jesse's also been exploring potential survey consultants as well, and that, as Kevin mentioned, that's a key part to get to the larger, greater community beyond the, that large community advisory group that you would have. But that would be the intent of the community advisory group, having a survey and then bringing that back to your community advisory group, the survey results, those preliminary results, to help further refine that recommendation to the board. I've already started kind of putting together a draft timeline with Jesse around what that might look like, so that you, if it were the board's intent to pursue an April referendum, how between now, August 7th, to January, I think your board meeting's the 22nd, that's kind of the deadline for you to be able to pass a resolution to put a question on the April ballot, how we can meet that with a pretty intensive community engagement in the month of September. That survey window kind of October into November, final review by that advisory committee, end of November, early December, allowing the board to not only then review the survey report, but also what's the recommendation from, what hopefully will be a good cross-representation of your community on that advisory committee. And then assuming you would pass a resolution, then we would continue to further support the district in that informational campaign, helping, you know, we wouldn't necessarily generate the content, that certainly that's very district dependent, but what we would do is help put it into good templates that whether you're going to create mailers or postcards or whatever, however you want to get information out, you know, whether it's helping Jesse have a informational slide deck, so that if he goes and speaks to community members, certainly that's, that's part of what we would be supporting as well. So, again, we provided this via change order, because we already have a professional agreement to conduct that facility study, I think Jesse included a draft of that change order for the services, and I think it entails the sculpt of services as well. So really, I'm just here to, again, answer questions about that next recommended stage of engaging your community and how you might proceed with informing the greater community as well.
Well, I think we're, you know, sort of ready to get things going, we're going to, I'm going to be appointing a subcommittee of the board, which will be involved with that whole community advisory group to get things going, so.
And that's really a great idea, because then it allows kind of a conduit, so that when all that information does come to the full board, there are board members who can say, yep, that's, that was discussed, or this is how they came to this conclusion.
Yeah, so they can work with the community and with the surveys and all of that, and then in December or whatever, when the whole board gets involved, present the findings, so, yeah, so.
Any questions about the partnership or engagement? Or about the process that?
I mean, you've been very clear all along, so I think we have a pretty good understanding, so, thank you.
Eric, can you also mention about the change order, because this is actually later on in the agenda here, how this is also included in the referendum?
Oh, well, certainly, yeah, you can, you can certainly include that in the referendum dollar amount. We would just have, you know, if it doesn't pass, then we would have some breakage fees because of the cost to support the district and help facilitate the process.
Any other questions?
Um, the original contract was 22, and then the price range was, is 34, the price change was, if you understand it.
The 22 was for the facility study.
Okay.
That was for the engineers, and I shouldn't, should also say, Bayland Builders will continue to be a partner in this, so during those community advisory committee meetings, Bayland Builders will, you know, that's part, that's built into this proposal as well, that they'll be providing people power, resources during that process as well. But the original amount was for the facility study, this is for the next community engagement phase and supporting an informational campaign.
So I got elected in April, how did Bayland Builders get picked into this?
So when we met with the board and with Jesse, it was, you conducted an interview process.
Yeah, we had done an extensive interview process, narrowed it down to two. One of our past board members, Dave Wessel, wanted to see if we could get Bayland involved, because we've had very good experience with Bayland in the past in terms of timeframes and sticking to the budget, no surprises and all of that, so that became part of it. But believe me, it was sort of an exhaustive thing, where we made phone calls to other districts to find out about different things and ended up choosing, so that's how it went.
So we ended up partnering with Bayland, and I believe there was at least one other company that you also interviewed in that process.
Right, 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 yeah.
I guess there was no, there was no numbers presented at that time for choice, it was...
Sure, there was, lots of numbers, lots of proposed numbers.
And they came in the chief's or...
Definitely, there was a, you know, there was a difference in the way it was presented. One of the other companies that we were looking at had this whole schedule of, remember that? Did you?
I wasn't on there.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's the trouble with the board. There was a whole schedule of all these additional potential costs that you didn't really get a handle on until you were actually into it, and it was renting trailers for their supervisors and having a supervisor of this and having a supervisor of that, and they were all different layers of things with a much bigger scale than we'd ever experienced before with Bayland, where with Bayland, we, and with McKinstry, when we had a dollar amount, we sort of knew what it was, so we were just dealing with that. And that was, it wasn't sort of contingent on a million of these other things. So overall, the, and yes, we were looking at money the whole time, obviously, we want to get a good deal for the district, but overall, the group felt a lot more comfortable going with sort of tried and true people we've worked with, when, when everything else sort of was pretty much equal.
And I'd like to think you brought additional value, whether it's my experience with referendums as a former superintendent, to support Jesse and his team, or our approach to kind of looking long-term, building long-term relationships with clients.
Yeah, they, they were a little more focused on the educational type referendums, and again, I mean, both offered to, you know, that their services.
Were you considering they, they as McKinstry or they as Bayland? And you say they were looking more educational?
Again, we, versus some of these other companies, I mean, every company we looked at had their own particular, you know, they were either the builders, and then they offered sort of what McKinstry does, and it was just a one kind of package. I mean, it's big business, I mean, these are, you know, we're frankly sort of small potatoes compared to a lot of the, a lot of the projects, a lot of districts do. Believe me, this is already going back a little while, so I don't want to try and have you pin me down to some exact numbers, but you have to trust, Mick was on it, Dave Wessel was on it, they, you know, it was an exhaustive kind of situation in terms of, of a process, and this is what the board, brought it to the board, the board approved it, and if, you know, if you have a problem.
The question was just there of...
This is not an, this is not anything different than what we would have been looking at.
You usually, I guess usually you get bids from two different companies in that time choose, I guess that's where that question came from, because it's McKinstry along with Bayland.
Right, and we did, we got...
Correct, we, I mean, we came in the middle of this, not knowing, you know what I mean, a lot of that stuff, so that's where that question came about, because that's where you might be able to shave some money, when you have bids out there from different companies as well. But when you go ahead and you get, and you basically lock in with McKinstry and Bayland, you don't have that choice to go and get a bid from somebody else, because that was kind of ahead of time, that, that's where you chose, I guess.
When you say a bid, bid for...
I'm just saying like your overall cost of, like the last part that he presented, save, I'll just say the bus garage, and it's a million dollars, you might get it from, I don't know, say, Myron Construction, and they might be $500,000. And they can shave, you know what I mean, but you already went through, from my understanding, and did that, I guess that's where my question was.
Right, yes, yes, because there was, you know, there were bids that were looked at.
The original you had from three, four different companies?
Right.
And went down and chose...
And then once we got down to the two, then we really pinned them down into getting bids to us that we could look at, so.
That, that's where that question, no, I'm not, but...
Yeah, I, I remember the process is starting in October, and I don't think we...
We didn't approve you until January. Yeah, it is hard, I understand. Docking in a referendum is a big deal, we're talking about a lot of money, we're talking about a lot of work, and coming onto the board...
In mid-flight.
In mid-flight, as to, you know, I mean...
This would be the last, I guess, I guess, change order contract from you guys, or is there another part to this coming down, like referendum and all this stuff? Is there another one then?
This would be pre-referendum.
I guess what I'm saying is down the line after save, go, referendum gets approved, and now it's building stages, is there another one after that? Or is that part of that referendum money then?
Yeah, it would be part of the referendum, but it, I think it would, what we had discussed was that we would then turn into more of a advisory, construction advisory or owner's rep, to help with the project.
Okay.
Any other questions for him while we're down here?
All right, thank you, Eric.
Yeah, thank you, Eric. And again, thank you, Kevin, I hope you guys both grow a bit to get here, so.
Thanks for coming to our schedule and having an early meeting.
All right, I will jump into the next item I have. Included in your board packet was information that I received from the Huonah County Sheriff's Department, working with Jason, Escher, Vizer, Jazer, the deputy chief for the sheriff's department, and we are set to go through their department to contact out with the school liaison officer for this upcoming safety year.
All right, thank you.
We are looking at three days a week with our SRO, and total, that would be split up into half-days, so we would have someone on-site every single day, with one day...
Okay.
Pardon?
I was wondering how the three quarters went into the every day.
Correct, yeah, with one day being a full day then, so.
Okay.
So four half-days and one full day, to equal three, three days. Our hope is that we will be partnering with Dana, who is the SRO, part-time over in Luxembourg Castle, so she brings experience, she brings knowledge of what it's like to be in a school setting, works very well with our younger students, that's her, her role right now, so. This has all gone through our safety committee, through the board, a few months ago, and it is brought to you for a vote for today.
Okay, so the safety committee did see the sheriff's, this contract?
This was just received last week, so we did not have a safety committee meeting since this came out, no. But we, what is included in here is what was discussed at the last safety committee meeting, nothing has changed, so.
Just to give you a little history on this, I used to be on the safety committee, we spent a lot of time with the city, trying to work something out, and we thought we did, and then the city never could come up with the personnel, or there's always some kind of a hiccup, so we just kind of dropped that relationship with the city, went through the company.
And Chris was also, is on the safety committee and was involved with that. I guess my only question is, I mean, this definitely covers most of all the financial My question, one of it is, what happens between, during the time that the school is on break, like Christmas and all of that, is that anything different, or do we just pay for it?
So my understanding is...
Aren't we paying them hourly?
We pay them hourly, correct. So they would not be working during that time. They may be doing some investigations, maybe that would come up involving students within the district.
Are we, I guess my question is, are we obligated for a certain amount of hours per week? That's really more my question.
We are obligated for three days a week.
Okay, so we would, so the other thing is, again, when the safety committee put all that work in, we had a really lovely contract that got into some of our expectations and our rationale for having a liaison, and there isn't any of that in this one, so I'm wondering if, if we could have like a job description or something, so that is sort of in writing? I mean, it's...
I'm glad you brought that up, so I've talked with Jason about that, and he is very open to whatever the district's needs are, they will need that. He's asked, what would a typical schedule look like for Dana V., and I said ideally it would be 50% elementary, 50% middle school, high school split. So doing a lot of programming at the elementary school, building that positive relationship with kids at a young age, so they look at law enforcement in a positive light. When you're up here, it's probably more of that reactive approach, so you're dealing with truancy, you're dealing with situations that come up here at the school that obviously are breaking the law, they're not going to be acting in the capacity of a disciplinarian, where they're going to be going into the lunchroom to supervise, or walking the hallways and telling kids not to run. They're here to serve in a law enforcement capacity, and that's what we would like them to be doing, so.
Well, and hopefully if they're not having to handle issues, we can also have them in a programming kind of thing, resource for the staff, and, and again, building relationships with the student. Yeah, yeah, okay, so if we can get some of that in writing, I would, I would think that that would be helpful for Dana or whoever they put in that position as well. Although if, if, is Dana a woman, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay, I'm assuming if she's currently acting as a liaison in another school district, that this is not a foreign idea to her, because I'm sure that...
She is currently the part-time at LC, elementary part of it, but also fills in when Nia, I believe her name is, the full-time at the high school, middle school, is either off or over, whatever.
Okay.
But typically, Jason, I mean, when we talk with this, they don't really take vacation. This is not their time for vacation as a liaison, they kind of know that, I mean, their vacation is when Christmas and the teachers are off.
Oh, okay.
They don't get to take a vacation in September for two weeks, when school is in session.
Got it.
Their off-time is just like the teachers were at the off-time.
Okay.
So like now, they're currently, if they want to, they can fill in, basically, that's their part-time role, you could say.
Sure.
They fill in back into the jail, or wherever is needed.
Okay, that means...
So, this is their primary job, but she, she fills in, they both kind of work together.
Got it.
Jesse, who, who, who does the billing?
Who would do the billing?
Tony?
Tony does, yep.
Okay, so they keep track of number rollers, and she must fill out some kind of chart sheet and thinking, okay.
I mean, it's not going to be cheap. I calculated $78,361, and we were like choking at $58,000 or something of the city, so I guess we have, the first, the first contract is going to be for four months. I mean, that's not the full 78, the 78 would be for the full school year.
Right.
But, and I have to make sure we're feeling we're getting value for that money, because we have made a lot of decisions lately about different things, because it's like, whoa, that could be a teacher, or whatever, and so I think we have to be cognizant when talking about monetary kinds of things. I'm not saying, I mean, it's, it's the price, because of their, their wage and their benefits and all that, I mean, that's what it comes to, so it's not like they're just trying to throw a number at us, but... So today, we will be approving the first four months of...
That's correct, first five weeks. Through September 3rd and September 3rd.
Okay.
Jesse, I know we had talked about this in that committee meeting. Did we ever, did anybody ever bring up, so if she would be sick for three days, did they supply somebody to cover?
Usually they do, yes, yeah, they would call in, and there's always, it wouldn't be just some random person, they have people kind of in line that would be the best fit for coming into the school, yeah.
I, I thought we talked about that, but, yeah.
And I do, you know, and I think it's appropriate, I'm not, I'm not complaining about it, the fact that if there is something where the sheriff's department feels they need to pull them for some type of...
Disaster?
Event, you know, that they need, yeah, I would think would have to be a pretty big, you know...
Event, yes.
And that's a great point, Mark, I like you brought that up, because there, there will be situations at both here in Boma or in Luxemburg-Cascow that will cause schedules to fluctuate at times periodically. Investigations will happen or whatever, and we both have talked as districts that we are more than flexible about adjusting hours later that week, so.
Excellent. Any other questions relating this? Okay, we'll keep moving then.
Okay.
Discussion items, Subcommittee for Referendum, well, this will be the committee that is going to initially work, you know, get that community group together, work with that community group, the survey, look at the survey results, basically be doing the stuff to then present to the full board. The way I decided to do it is Pat would be the chair, she is our finance chair, and she is our treasurer, so I felt that she would be the appropriate chair for this, and then two people from our Building and Grounds Committee, so that would be you, Lonnie, and Chris. Chris also was part of the initial facility study, so that sort of works out nicely there, because he has a little bit of background on where some of this stuff started. So if, I guess we can't ask Chris, but if the two of you accept being on that meeting, you all, and that, okay, great, so we'll find out from Chris, but, oh. All right.
Lots of work to do.
Yeah. CISA 7, Board Representative Vacancy. The reason I have that on as a discussion item is because this is sort of an honor to be on part of the board. I don't know how many districts are in our region or in CISA 7, but we've always had this board position, Mick was on it forever.
Twenty-one years.
Yes, and it gives us a voice as a small district, as a small rural district, and we have missed one meeting already, and about to miss a second one. I don't know how long we can do that without having them appoint a different district to the board, so I know that it's, it's another meeting, it's a monthly meeting, I think, is it the second Wednesday? I think it's the second Wednesday of every one in the evening in Zerene Bay, so that, you know, it's a commitment, but if, and, you know, if everyone can think about it, I think, I think time is sort of of the essence in this.
There might be a question for tomorrow?
Yes, yes, I agree. Okay, I guess we'll move to action items. I need a motion to approve the McKinney Street Facility Study Change Order not to exceed $34,095.
So moved.
Motion made by Pat, right here, second.
I'll second.
Second by Ann. Any further questions or discussion on that? Are you none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the sheriff's school liaison officer agreement with Kewanee County Sheriff's Office for, like, 2023, imparted 24, right?
Not this one, it's just 2023.
Oh, it just goes through December, just for, okay.
Another one?
Okay, perfect.
Later.
All right, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion made by Pat, seconded by Chris B. Any questions or discussion on that? Are you none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any motion to approve the revised middle high school student handbook?
So moved.
Motion made by Chris, right here, second.
Second.
Second by Ann. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin statute, five subsections, one C, one C for the purpose of hiring.
So moved.
Heard by Lonnie.
Second.
And Chris, you'll call vote, Lonnie.
Yep.
Yeah. Yes, Chris.
Yes.